Somebody call our regular meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order, and turn things over to Pastor Albright. Please give an indication, please.
The chapter two says that Jesus born angels say peace. So let's give thanks to the peace of God. He gave us the blessing. He gives us this past and this freedom. Father, having come to you home with us, we come to the end of this year. And just look back over the past twelve months, Lord, and just look how we got blessed. This town and this community, Yountville, we're so thankful for the things you've done. There's so many that we can't even count them all, Lord, for renovating the main street. This is our Parkson ramp. It's a new charter. Swearing in about a new town manager for the first time. Lord, from new businesses that are coming to our town, and more especially for these citizens that are making their homes real. And Father, as we move forward, Lord, thank you for the upcoming year, Lord, and continue to ask you to bless us, Lord. Father, show us how to serve our town even better. There's a lot of work that's been done, Lord, that we know there's a lot more to do. Father, pray, Lord, that you give our mayor, our commissioners, and the people who surround him, Lord, just through visiting today so well. Give them the ears to hear their facilities well, Lord. Lord, protect them and their families. Will we thank you for the protection we do have to your police department, Lord? Thank you for the wonderful woman who did this past reading, the shop on the top, Lord. Continue to bless those families that were served, Lord. Father, we ask you to bless my children, to praise them up, Lord. Amen.
Amen. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. We do have a slight change. I'd like to move the audit presentation up if possible to go ahead and get Mr. Grissom on and off the phone. So I'll entertain a motion to move item eight C under basically item three C at that point.
So move.
All right, we got a first and a second. You need a discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Swearing in of re-elected officials. Unfortunately, Commissioner Joe Johnson is away on a work call in Florida, I believe. It's either Atlanta or Florida. He's not in North Carolina. So that leaves Commissioner Scott Brain, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Scott Brain, to be sworn in. So I guess we'll go up here. Team, I think you might end up, there we go. I, Scott Brain.
I, Scott Brain.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The constitutional laws.
The constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitutional laws.
And the constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the town of Yountville.
To the town of Yountville.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are, or may be.
Which are, or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner for the town of Yountville.
As Commissioner for the town of Yountville.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Ability and judgment.
Ability and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Absolutely. All right, so we'll move to item three C at this point, and go ahead and have our audit presentation. You said Mr. Grissom is on the line with us now?
Yes, sir. Are you able to hear us?
Leave it on mute. It tells when we're going to open the agenda. Or just while we explore some of our technical difficulties here, so.
But we're unmuted there.
He's on mute there.
Just let it wait soon.
All right, can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Let's get started.
The floor is yours. Tell us, tell us how awesome we are.
All right, will do. All right, good evening. I'm here to present the audit for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three for the town of Yountville. This is our fifth year auditing the town of Yountville. For this particular audit, we had three audit opinions that we had to give our, you know, our professional independent opinion on. The first one being the financial statements. For the financial statement, we issued an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion. And that's in our professional opinion using governmental auditing standards. You know, you can rely on these financial statements that they're fairly presented and free of material error, in our opinion. So, you know, that's our highest level assurance, and that's, you know, it's a really good thing. The next thing is we have a single, we have a single audit that we also had opinion on, as well as yellow book. And the yellow book is the governmental auditing required to test internal controls. And throughout that testing, we had no findings, no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls identified. So that's the second year in a row that we had no findings or reported no findings. So the first couple of years we were auditing the town, we had a couple of minor findings, but we got those cleaned up in the last two fiscal years. So also really positive there. The third one being, the third opinion, that's the single audit one I mentioned a second ago. You guys triggered a federal single audit with expenditures over seven hundred and fifty thousand. They were federal grant expenditures during the fiscal year. And that was related to the pedestrian plan project fund. So I think there was over, I think, two point six million dollars of expenditures in that fund this year. So that was a lot of the story when we look at the finances for the fiscal year. A lot of the trends are basically, a lot of things you see in this fiscal year are based on what you see in that fund. A couple of housekeeping items. During the audit, we didn't have any, there were no disagreements with management or the staff that we worked in the business office with. They provided full access to records. There were no illegal acts or fraud or anything that we uncovered. We did not consult with other auditors. Also, one really positive thing is we got the audit submitted before the October thirty-first deadline, which that's always a huge priority. Nathan, he drives really hard to make sure we get that audit report on time. And even though you've had some turnover in your finance officer position, the fact that you're able to get the audit out on time is a great. Almost serves kind of as a signal that, you know, the town's records are in good shape and can be audited in an efficient manner. So we got, so we got the audit report on time. As far as internal record keeping, we only, we had about five journal entries. And that's, and that's on par with municipality of the size of Yountville. I would say anything around five journal entries would be just on par. So that's, you know, that's where we come in. We get the books, the unadjusted books, and we go through it. And, you know, we spotted a few areas here and there that we posted. But really, nothing really alarming that was basically on par with what you would expect. There were no issues with bank reconciliations that you'll see sometimes with smaller municipalities. We didn't identify any budget issues. So overall, overall, it was a really good audit from our standpoint. And internal controls were designed and implemented effectively, in our opinion. And just to note, the ABC board, which we also audited the ABC, Yountville ABC, that is included in the report. Just to note, the ABC's total assets of June thirtieth, twenty-three, were just under two point five million. And they increased the net assets for the year five hundred and seventy-two thousand. So it was a strong year for the ABC board, whose net position was just under one point five million dollars on June thirtieth. The town's overall books, their total assets of June thirtieth were at just under thirteen million, total liabilities just under six million. And your total net position, seven point eight million dollars. The overall change in net position for the town was one point eight million dollars for the fiscal year. And your tax collection percentage, right around state average, was at ninety-nine point one one percent. Is there any questions at this moment before we go into the graphs?
No, sir. Please continue.
All right, we keep moving. Let's look at the first graph. It looks like we have fiscal year information going back to two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three, and just a handful of graphs, which these are, most of these are what the local government commission would be interested in and us discussing. The first one being analysis of fund balance, governmental funds. And as you can see, really, beginning in two thousand, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two, a strong increase with the governmental funds, fund balance increasing. For this fiscal year, there was a budgeted decrease. That's where the pedestrian fund expenditures, which they were more expenditures than the direct revenue in this fiscal year of just around a million dollars. So that was the decrease for this fiscal year from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Let's go to the next one. Now, this is analysis of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. This is kind of the emergency fund for the town and the general fund. And there was a decrease. And again, this was related to that project fund, the pedestrian project fund. The general fund basically kind of has a loan out to the pedestrian fund at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Not a loan, but there's a due-to, due-from situation where the pedestrian fund owes the general fund. And because of that, the general fund's unassigned fund balance is reduced by the amount that the pedestrian fund owes the general fund, which at June thirtieth, that's one point three million dollars. So as a result, what I'm getting at is you can see in two thousand and twenty-three in this graph a decrease in the unassigned fund balance percentage. So the previous fiscal year, it spiked up to a hundred and five percent. And then this fiscal year, it's down to fifty-six percent. And I do recall last year when I was presenting this same graph, I remember your town manager, Nathan, mentioned that this was probably, that twenty-two was a little bit kind of an outlier. And it was like that, he knew at that time, I think, that it was gonna be a decrease. So I think that was anticipated. And just to note, the local government commission publishes the average and as well as the minimum percentage. And the minimum target is thirty-four percent. So the town's still above the minimum target of municipalities of relative size. And the average is about sixty-three percent. So you're below sixty-three percent. But I imagine once that amount that the pedestrian fund owes the general fund, once that money is transferred back or that money is allocated back to the general fund, that the percentage would be a good bit higher than as presented here. Let's go to the next one. Total cash, all funds. And at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the far right column, you're at three million seventy-seven thousand, very similar to two thousand and twenty-one's cash balance. And you can see a decrease of about seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. And again, that goes back to the money spent in that pedestrian project fund, which is a big, you know, the factor here of why there's a decrease. All right, the last one, long-term debt by fiscal year. And this one includes your pension liability expense. And that's the main reason that you're seeing this significant spike. If you just only had your installment debt, you know, traditional debt, you would see this trend look completely different. It would be going down as your debt payments are going down. But the, your pension liability increased by eight hundred thousand this year, which was actuarially determined liability. That's kind of out of our control in a lot of ways. So that's, that's the reason that you're seeing that increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. So again, as I mentioned before, you had some turnover in your finance position, but overall, we were, we were very satisfied, still able to get the audit out, you know, in a very efficient, efficient manner, working with your finance department, getting these financial statements out. You know, it's always a challenge. There's a lot of nasty footnotes that we have to write. They keep coming up with new standards. But overall, your, you know, your staff did a great job helping us get this out, this audit out, you know, out in an efficient manner. So it was a good audit from our standpoint. And yeah, your staff, like I said, did a great job. Any questions?
I think you covered pretty well.
All right, sounds good. You guys have a, have a good holiday season, and I'll see you next year, hopefully.
Will do. Thank you so much.
All right.
So congratulations on that. In layman's terms, that was basically perfect. So, or some would maybe consider boring, which when it comes to audits, from an audit perspective, boring is good. So we'll move along into public hearings. And the first item under public hearings is annexation petition, Mace Crossroads T MMG Development, two thousand and twenty-three dash three. I will open the hearing to the public as of seven eighteen and turn things over to Clerk Hurd for the staff report.
Everything is in order, the signatures, the boundary maps. The petition, everything is ready to go.
All right, sounds good. Did we have anyone sign up to speak on item A?
Please.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any comments from the public in regards to the annexation petition from Mace Crossroads? All right, hearing none. I will close the meeting as of seven eighteen and move along into item B. Petition for zoning amendment, Willow Development LLC, Holden Road, from single-family residential three to RMST. I will open the hearing to the public as of seven nineteen and turn things over to Planner Garcia for the staff report.
First sixteen meetings, we needed to accept the planning staff report and recommend that the board approve their request of rezoning from SFR three to RMST because the proposed movement is consistent with the town plan of goal point two, point one, and actually baby. And that the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use map. The planning board also unanimously made a recommendation to require annexation before the board of commissioners would vote on the rezoning. And for that, I'll just add that there is no how to begin that petition process for the annexation. So yeah, based on all this, staff recommendations of the reason.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'll move along into comments from the public. And I know we did have one registered for this one. If I'm reading this correctly, I believe that's Robin Sullivan at six fifty-eight Holden Road. If you'd like to come up or you can speak from there, however you want to do it. Sure.
I used to see you. Yeah, somebody.
Well, you know, as long as I can motivate them, that's what I'm trying to do, so.
So I'm Robin Sullivan. I have lived in Franklin County for three, six years. I guess my Yountville elementary, did the first one, three, Franklin, and so on and so forth. So I'm passionate about this community. That development that is coming on holding. This is horrible house. We desperately horrible house. If you look in the MLS today, there are fifteen available active houses that are three hundred and fifty thousand more lives. Most are flips, most are, oh, you know, brain damage, simple life. If you look in three hundred and fifty thousand and up, there are a hundred people. And I know that people's on the road and have been twenty-four years. I get people calling all the time, first time home, I can't leave them for it. It's what I have to tell them. They're either going to France, they're going to Kitchell, even Kitchell's getting pricing these days. Or they're going to offer to buy an old house because there's no milk. Obviously, even the, you know, lower class station for the US, same store, and they kind of go on with this. So this development here on holding the right, it's within walking distance. How many houses can we have? Where you feel like if we need, if you couldn't walk, you walk past church, you go off to the elementary school later here, you can walk downtown for publications. We don't have that. All we have right now is traffic going through here. And that's it. And we need a four in the past. When I started in Franklin County, in Yountville, twenty-four years ago, we had starting homes at a hundred and fifteen thousand, ninety-nine thousand. Obviously, we can't do that because of land, because of buildings and girls, the list goes on, go further. But I just want to put it aside because I'm a real person and I don't live in these people don't. I can find something in them or I can find something in all through, but it's not there. So just to follow up, we need more community, intel, we need more.
Okay. Thanks for that. All right, I know generally we ask for people to sign up, but we can also kind of keep it low-key. Are there any other comments from the public prior to me closing the hearing? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing as of seven twenty-three and move along into item C, which is a petition for zoning amendment, T MMG Development LLC, Tarver Road, from NB, which is a Franklin County zoning designation to RMST. I will open the hearing to the public as of seven twenty-three and turn things over to Planner Garcia, yet once again, board staff report.
Okay, I'll start by saying that there is a mistake on this agenda. It was listed in two, about RMST. I'm sorry about that. The resolution, the new paper notice and the staff report, all correct. That is the only place where it says.
I was gonna say, that would have been pretty difficult to make that contiguous. Yeah, I'm glad you just pointed that out. Okay. All right, into.
So again, the November sixteenth meeting, the fighting for the identity voted in favor of recommend approving the rezoning because the proposal is consistent with the time plan and with the future land use map. So with that, staff recommends approval of these reasons.
I remember reading that in the, in our notes here. So just, basically, it's just a typo in item C here. It said RMST is MU two, and then at the bottom, under eight, the, it should be MU two, correct?
So the ordinance that y'all will not approve later in the agenda has the correct specifications. If it wasn't approved, it would be approved with a print, so.
Okay, as long as we've got that covered and everyone is on the same page, because transparency is a big thing. So thank you for the correction there. So any additional items, Planner Garcia?
So NB for Franklin County zoning is neighborhood access and MU two sessions.
Okay. All right, sounds good. And with that, I will open up to comments from the public. So if there's anyone here that would like to make a comment in regards to item C, the floor is yours. All right, seeing and hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing as of seven twenty-five and move along into citizens' comments. Madam Clerk, did we have anyone who signed up to give a citizen's comment tonight? Is there anyone in attendance who would like to make citizen's comment? Oh, you go. As long as you were quiet, you could have just left. Understood. Well, I hope, I hope the kiddo is doing great, because I understand. Well, thank you for, thank you for showing up and giving some info. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, so hearing no other citizens' comments, we will move along into the consent agenda. And I will ask, bless you, what is the pleasure of the board in regards to the consent agenda?
Meant to approve.
Okay. All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that means none opposed. Right along into old business. Item A is the annexation ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three dot three, Mace Crossroad, Mace Crossing, T MMG Development. The action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three dash three.
A motion to adopt annexation.
Aye.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed, that motion carries? Item eight, or eight new business, excuse me. Item A is petition for zoning amendment, Willow Development LLC, Holden Road, from single-family residential to RMST. I see here we've got a little note for Clerk Hurd. Was there anything, Ms. Hurd, that you needed to add to this prior to discussion? Or was it already, it was already covered in the staff report? Yeah, okay, all right.
Just again, the typos, no, that's the next one.
That's next. I've already, yeah, I've already corrected the typo.
Sorry.
No, so it's okay, it's okay. Once again, the action requested here is to approve zoning amendment as presented.
Move to approve.
Like it.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any, and any opposed? That motion also carries. Sorry, Commissioner Wiggins, I was not trying to jump the gun. Item B, petition for zoning amendment, T MMG Development LLC, Tarver Road, from NB, Franklin County zoning, to MU two. The action requested here is to approve zoning amendment as presented. Move to approve.
So yeah.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is also unanimous? Now's when it gets fun. Okay, all right. So yeah, anytime we move the agenda, I'm jotting notes and flipping pages. So, okay. Item D, that's where I had notes on this page. Okay. Madam Clerk, I think you have the next two in your wheelhouse. So item D is the presentation of annexation petition, ARS Rent Apartments LLC, two thousand and twenty-three dash four. And then also, under that, you're gonna go ahead with E as well, correct? Then I just kind of keep it clean for you?
Three, G.
All right, well, I'll just read them out loud, and then I'll let you talk to those. So item E, resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under General Statute two sixty-eight dash thirty-one, ARS Rent Apartments LLC, two thousand and twenty-three dash four. Item F, presentation of certificate of sufficiency for annexation, ARS Rent Apartments LLC, two thousand and twenty-three dash four. And finally, resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to Nookon General Statutes, one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, ARS Rent. one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, ARS Rent Apartments LLC, twenty twenty-three dash four.
So all of y'all familiar with where the Ben property, our property is located, up close to the Food Lion Shopping Center? It is in being combined from three properties, Ben Apartments, Brink Farms, Brink Street, all same owner, all the same signatures, the same gentleman is in charge of all three of the LLCs. I verified that through the NC Secretary of State and everything else. Um, so that is good to go. Um, I knew that y'all would direct me to investigate, so I have all the paperwork. And we are again, everything is in order and are ready to go. Um, if I'm looking at my map chart, this will make, uh, Food Lion contiguous to the rest of town. It will connect Food Lion to the main, um, yeah, so.
Outstanding. Uh, anything else, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Just the two resolutions.
All right. So we do have a resolution, uh, and the action requested here is to approve the resolution for, uh, directing clerk to investigate, which she's already done. Um, but we still need to entertain a motion to approve said resolution.
Still approve.
Okay. All right. We got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right. And any opposed? I thought I heard three ayes, so we're good there. And then, uh, finally, we need an action, uh, requested to approve a resolution setting public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to set public hearing.
All right. We got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right. And that is also unanimous. Um, moving into items nine, A through D, uh, reports and other business. This time of year is always fun. It's always super busy because we've got a lot of stuff that's kind of culminating, uh, in, at one time. Uh, the tree lighting, I felt like was extremely successful, so, uh, very thankful for Faith Baptist and, um, what they are, they are able to provide and helping us out with that. Um, I know Parks and Rec is very involved with, with making that happen as well. Um, the parade, again, you know, when you got the longest running Christmas parade in the state of North Carolina, year after year, you just kind of get a little bit better and a little bit better and a little bit better. And there's occasional hiccups with people not realizing where they shouldn't, shouldn't up hard, but all in all, uh, it's always a great time. So, um, Ms. Robbie, Emily, you guys were outstanding as always with, uh, the planning and getting everything together. Uh, always want to thank Faith Baptist, because without you guys, we can't, we can't pull it off the way we can, right? So, um, Kiwanis, Dave Jeros, I know he can be a thorn in the side sometimes, but that man will get out there and volunteer his rear end off, and I'm very appreciative of that. So, and I know we had a ton of other volunteers, but I gotta say, and this is no, this is no knock on Robbie. The most spirited recording of the parade ever, I gotta give it to Ms. Garcia. So congratulations on that. Um, to, to be that spirited and that energetic, um, even though we were in the parade, I almost felt like I'd never seen it before, uh, watching that. So, um, outstanding job there. I did get a chance to, speaking of David Jeros, he invited me to, um, speak to the Wake Forest chapter of the Boy Scouts. So I was able to do that last week and gave them a, a speech on leadership and ethics. And it was, it was a fun speech, because after that, we just kind of opened the floor, and some of the questions that, that I got was, uh, very entertaining. And it, it stretched from what my favorite shoe was to if I have a helicopter. So, um, the answer to the last piece is no, I, I do not have a helicopter. I don't think the taxpaying citizens of Youngsville would appreciate that very much. Um, and then finally, kind of wrapping up, uh, early this week, shop with a cop. You guys rocked it out again, man. So congratulations on that. Um, this is the first time I've actually seen you guys parade out with the lights on and doing that thing. So, um, you guys are top notch. You know, we're super supportive of you guys, and we know it's, it's reciprocal. So, um, we thank you for that. Um, I'm not gonna talk about the meeting that you and I had yesterday. We're gonna, we're gonna settle that.
Okay.
And I think that's it for me. So Commissioner Percy?
I got nothing. I'm trying to keep up with, uh, me, baby and Christmas, so. Somebody asked me this day.
Good luck with that.
Somebody asked me today, like, oh, have you got presents for him yet? I was like, I thought that Santa just dropped all those.
I need to do it. I mean, that's how it's done. I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah. Outstanding. All right. Mr. Brain?
Uh, just to add on to what Mayor Flowers said, the Christmas tree lighting was great. The parade was great. Um, we had a lot of our citizens coming up and, and thanking us for continuing to have the parade and how much fun they had. And, um, we of course say thank you, and, uh, I quickly point out that you guys do all the work, the, the staff, um, the police department, public works. Um, you, you gotta do a great job, and really, all we have to do is show up and look pretty and.
And that's.
We do our best. But really, thank you guys for doing that, because I literally put my suit on and walk across the street and get on the float. And it's, it's, it's very easy for us, and, uh, thank you for all you did.
Showing up is one thing, looking pretty, that's, that was a difficult task, your stores, so.
Uh, there is no Campo meeting, uh, next week, uh, so the next one will be in January. Uh, we did have our kickoff meeting for the master parks and rec plan. I forget what day that was, it was just last week or two weeks ago. Uh, really excited about that. That's gonna complement our comprehensive land use and transportation plan that just wrapped up. And you, you've got a lot of excitement with the advisory group that we have, and we're in the process of identifying other stakeholders that we're gonna bring in, and, uh, some of you guys are in the room. Um, so if you haven't been reached out to yet, you will. Uh, but looking forward to having that in place and, um, one of the things I mentioned in the early stages of that meeting is, or that process is, it's important for us because we, we wanna add parks and we wanna add trails, and we go to Campo for money, and when we put these projects in, they score low, and one of the the first questions on any scoring is, do you have a master plan for either transportation or parks and rec? And so having this in place will help us score higher, and it's getting more funding, enable us to do the thing we want to do in town. So I'm excited about it and, uh, looking forward to that process planning out. So there's gonna be some outreach events. We haven't set the date yet. It's gonna be two days in February. And, uh, that'll be for, for the public, similar to what we did for the comprehensive land use plan. So I have.
All right. Take that. Uh, Commissioner Wiggins?
Well, I have.
Okay. Um, I am gonna jump back into something real quick, because I forgot to mention that. Um, we have, I've actually got two other things. Casino night is the kickoff to our fundraising season for our Cesla Centennial. Uh, for those that do not know what a Cesla Centennial is, it is a hundred and fifty years. So in twenty twenty-five, we'll be celebrating um, a hundred and fifty years of Youngsville. So super excited about that. You can go on our, uh, webpage and buy your ticket there. Um, without getting into too many details, we've, we've got some sponsors already. We would love to pack the place out. It is limited to one hundred tickets. So do not delay. Uh, it is guaranteed to be a fun night. It's gonna be a great fundraiser. It'll be some cool prizes that are awarded, um, later on. Um, and one other thing I wanted to bring up, because I read, uh, our local newspaper, um, today, but it was last week that I, I took a little bit of umbrage with something, and Carrie, please bear with me, this was not you. Um, but there was, there was commentary about the town and the town needing to get involved if, if a bypass is wanted or needed or things of that nature. And I can promise you with a thousand percent certainty, not a hundred percent, thousand percent certainty, this man right here, Mr. Brain, has been kicking butt and is showing up at those meetings and certainly giving his input. So I never want anyone to think that the town of Youngsville is asleep at the wheel, because I can't be at everything, Commissioner Percy can't be at everything. So when we kind of parcel these things out between Chamber of Commerce and Campo and other things, um, we've got representation there. So I just want to make sure that that is noted. So any readers know that this, this is a real thing we got going on. So off my soapbox, we still love you guys. We still appreciate your fair and honest reporting. We just wanted to make that, that clarification. So, um, Ms. Katie Barbara Jones, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, public business report.
All right. Uh, and I'll turn things over to staff. Uh, any updates, comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had just a few. Uh, the easiest one is, we tried to do that sort of lease pickup this week, and we were, um, surprised by how efficient the contractor was in picking up the leaves that had fallen over two weeks and then were wet, 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 because it rained so much on Sunday and frozen. And, and yes, they were also frozen that morning. So it was, um, a, a much more efficient use of time to be able to pick the entire, well, almost the entire town in one week. There were a few small spots that were left unpicked that, um, town staff would be working on for the rest of the week. But we anticipate moving in a direction potentially with a contractor next year, and you'll hear more about that during the budget review. We will have the capital improvement plan, which will, um, have like the automated trash truck, a new lawnmower for Parks and Rec, um, and new, uh, vehicles for the police department through fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. And that'll be presented along with a budget workshop sometime in March or so. We'll schedule that all together. I wanted to give a, a couple of updates about NCDOT. We still don't have a start date on the Five Points Project. Um, I'll let you know if, when I hear something more about that. The S-line received a billion dollars in funding from the federal government. That is anticipated to create a service through the town of Wake Forest from Raleigh. It does not yet have any, um, impact on Youngsville or the core work of Youngsville. However, it's one of those things where you're watching the water come at you, where you know it's about to hit you next. Um, instead of us applying for a railroad crossing elimination grant this year, NCDOT is applying for the next bunch of the S-line projects, which would include a hundred percent of the property of three Youngsville and the, the, um, crossings that we discussed previously. Representative Winslow has worked tirelessly to get us a half million dollars for the acquisition of Right of Way. Staff is moving forward with that, and tonight, that was part of the budget amendment, was to agree with the resolution that you passed last month, which, uh, was to request a half million dollars from the Speaker of the North Carolina General Assembly in order to, uh, purchase the right of way for most of the bypass that we optioned, uh, around the time of approving the rolling eight years neighborhood. You also asked me last month to reach out to NCDOT and to draft a resolution for NCDOT regarding truck traffic downtown. Uh, I communicated very heavily with NCDOT by various means. Um, and I, I would like to report back that, um, Mayor Pro Tim Scott Brain and Mayor Flowers and I are all going to meet with the state traffic engineer in Youngsville one day in January. I don't remember what day it is. Um, and we have conveniently requested that he be present from two thirty to three thirty, which is when Youngsville Elementary School gets out. As we know, there's a, um, similar traffic jam at the beginning, the end of the day, and then when the elementary school gets out. So they should be here present for that and have enough time to walk the street with us in an effort to show them what Youngsville is like, because they may not have been here, they may not know, they may not realize that there are so many heavy trucks on our main street. Um, and after that discussion, that would be when I would recommend that we pursue the next resolution of whatever the next step is within CDOT at that time. Along that line, um, there were a number of complaints that I received from the crosswalks downtown. Um, and, uh, vehicles not yielding to individuals in the crosswalks. So I wanted to get input from the board, whether you wanted to see the, um, little yellow sign that's about where the double yellow line is that says yield to pedestrians, those exist around the seminary in Wake Forest, or you wanted to see the flashing beacons on the side of the road, or if there was another solution that you had in mind.
Your opinions? I hate those lights on the street. My opinion.
So you'd rather have the flashing lights?
Any sex.
It would only be when they're in the crosswalk, right?
Yes.
I think that makes sense.
So it has a sensor?
Yeah. Okay. Where they press a button.
Yeah, push a button.
Yeah, I'm with you, Commissioner Wiggins. I think they, they certainly serve a good purpose, but having to like drive around them, especially with the cars parked right there, it becomes, uh, a little chaotic.
To when some of the cars park out.
Yes, absolutely.
I guarantee the trucks will tear it up, wouldn't it?
We, we spend five hundred dollars a sign and have to replace it on a daily basis, they're about. So, yeah. I think the, I think the flashing lights, uh, makes a lot of sense. Uh, Commissioner Brain, Commissioner Percy, feel free to, to chime in if you feel.
It works for me.
Okay.
The only other question that I had was, uh, I met with the new, uh, economic development director for the county, and one of the questions that she had for me was, what sort of uses is Youngsville interested in attracting? I didn't have a good answer for that. The question was that there was, um, potentially in one extreme, a battery manufacturer that would be, if they didn't come in here. That would be a lot of very hazardous chemicals that we may or may not want to have within the town limits of Youngsville. Um, that sort of thing, or if you wanted something that was more along the lines of, uh, commercial retail spaces, or if you wanted something that was more along the lines of, um, a, a new, um, excuse, community, something like that. I'm happy to have those discussions with y'all later. I know I just dropped.
I think I want to think through that a little bit, because I, I'm with you, you know, everyone loves their electric cars, but they don't, I don't think they understand the impact to the environment once that battery is shot. So if it's, if it's that bad on, on the backside, I wonder what it's like having built, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's it's a lot of chemicals. I'm not knocking your car. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I've.
We can all try.
Fair enough. Um, but please, yeah, let us, let us kind of, uh, think through that and digest a little bit and see what, what we feel like will be the best.
Parameters here of a battery manufacturer is gonna be a very large facility.
Yes, that, that is a very good point. Um, there aren't many parcels that would work for something that would be of that size. Um, about the only one that I can think of that would be sizable enough for something that would do real manufacturing like that would be the, at the intersection of one and Stephen Taylor. And that, to me, doesn't fit with what we would want for a, uh, heavy impact industrial use.
So that will have a lot to do with what we could put here, even if we wanted it.
As well as water availability.
But that's getting figured out, right? Okay. Um, do we know how many people they would be employing? Or just, it was just kind of a, hey, do you think this would work, kind of the?
I think that was one of the extreme example.
I got you.
I don't believe that there's actually a battery manufacturer looking at that.
Okay. All right. Um, fair enough. Uh, anything else from staff?
No, sir. Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I do. Uh, we got some great feedback from Sheriff Kevin White, while, uh, he was impressed by how professional it ran with all the hiccups and how well our staff did. Best town staff, police department, and great. I'm happy about that. It's good for that. You can take it one way, instead of the most professional running, and frankly, that's, so. And he'll take shopping without money, amazing. Uh, your team for all the support, your support, um, all the sponsors and your, you know, major like names are not going to treat you, uh, Jake the Light and, uh, yes, that's based on, they did a great job with the, uh, participants and staff for that event. It was outstanding. And, uh, the Spanish and cash loans, the support services, they're a lot of the job, and they're still, we're not done. There's still a lot of potential gifts which we're going to deliver to, but so that leads. So that leads on Christmas.
Good deal. I like it. Thank you so much. All right, anything else from staff?
You still have a lot of thunder about the Christmas parade. I can thank everybody as well. Some of the other volunteers were covenant hope shirts for previous years. Brian, because we were unable to attend as they were saying, whatever is going around now. I am so glad everybody thought it was great from where I'm standing and it actually chaos. So the fact that we could
Control chaos.
Do you get into a parade, I'm very excited that it it went really well. Casino night is January twentieth. There are only a hundred tickets. We have already accounted for a third of these tickets. And there's only sixty-seven tickets remaining. They would take great Christmas presents. The five K will be March sixteenth. It is a St. Patrick's Day race. It will start downtown near Yacht Club and in there as well. And Yacht Club is allowing us to use their facilities to end up the awards and things like that. And they will also have music throughout the day at Yacht Club as well. And then the following event, which I think the next one following that would be the Asian and then the golf tournament. We are looking at May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five for our main sesquicentennial celebration. We will start the day of the parade. We will have events through downtown, the parks and the museum, Victorian possible throughout the entire day and we will end our evening at the light part of fireworks. And then we will end our hundred fifty year, hundred fiftieth year with the tree lighting ceremony with fireworks there as well. It should be a great year and hope to see everybody anytime of the day.
We have some more sponsors in the life.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
I like it. All right, any additional commentary from staff? All right, hearing none. I will go to item ten, which is closed session. There is no need to move into closed session. So next up is I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And no one should be opposed in this meeting.